All right, I'd like to call the Macomb City Council to order, please. If the clerk would call the roll.
Mike Wayland.
Here.
John Vajese.
Here.
Annette Carper.
Here.
Tom Cook. Gail Carper.
Here.
Tammy Lee Brown Edwards.
Here.
Dennis Moon.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Mr. Administrator, you have something for us, I think, before we get started?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a question that has come up. As we're doing in City Hall and within Phase Four guidelines, when everybody gets six feet apart and can social distance, then we can take our masks off. Once you move around and you need to be next to someone, then you need to have your mask on. Same thing we've been doing in City Hall, if someone's sitting at their desk, they're fine, if someone comes and talks to them, then we need to put their mask on. So that's, I talked with the Health Department this afternoon just to confirm that we understood that, but yes, that is the case. As long as you're socially distanced, then there's, you don't need a mask. Soon as everyone comes in with their mask, when you get up and leave, you put your mask on. So, all ahead.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone wish to speak to the Council on the Public Comments section of tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none here in the chamber. I think we have some written public comments that were submitted. Miss, Madam Deputy Clerk, if you could read those for us, please.
Okay, I have seven to read tonight, and I'll leave them in order that they were received. This one is from Pat Civil. "I feel safe living in Macomb because I think Kurt Barker and his officers do a very good job protecting our city and keeping the peace. It has always been known to be a good family community to live in as long as I can remember. A woman can go out at night and not feel like she is unsafe. I also give lots of credit to Sheriff Nick Pettigout and his organization for working hard to keep our county safe from excessive drug dealers, home invasions, wanted criminals, et cetera. Our law enforcement tried to keep our town as safe as possible. There may be some situations that aren't seen as fair, but we don't always know the true situation. Any organization has the same question asked of their services. I also want to thank Mayor Inman for doing a good job trying to do what is best for our town and trying to please as many people as he can. That is a very big job, and one that is very difficult to please all concerned. He loves Macomb, a hometown boy, and he has our town's best interests at heart. I salute all of you for trying very hard to do your job as best as you can. Pat Civil." Grace Miller. "Dear City Council of Macomb, it is refreshing to see a council member in action with integrity, courage, and a voice to help your city grow and unite as well as standing up for what is right. Progress requires individuals like Alderman Brown Edwards, who is willing to actively serve her community in areas that have been deprived even in the face of adversity. City Council continue to unite and stand up for justice and the rights of all Macomb citizens. Respectfully, Grace Miller." Victoria Cook. City of Macomb, Illinois City Council. "I stand in support of my sorority sister Tammy Lee Brown Edwards, who is a person of integrity and honesty, whose sole mission is to improve the community for its residents. False accusations will not detour her nor those who support her. As African-Americans, we know all too well the strategies of white nationalists who lie and mischaracterize what people of color actually do and say. This is why we march and kneel in protest. I applaud Tammy Lee Brown Edwards for her service to the community and City of Macomb. She continues to do the work of the people and will not be deterred. Sincerely, Victoria Cook." Myra Simon. "To whom it may concern, I demand direct action be taken place in defense of Tammy Brown Edwards' false allegations. A public apology should be issued in a timely manner. These offenses are not taken lightly, and the public demands respect for the only black city council member. The blatant racism and disrespect conveyed is unacceptable and deserves immediate attention and action. Best, Myra Simon." City of Macomb Public Comments. Thank you for taking the time to read my comments. I try to watch the meetings and pass on information to people that I know in hopes of increasing knowledge in our community. I found it very upsetting that there were so many letters placing blame on victims in the community. If you have not experienced an issue of any type of discrimination while living here, congratulations. That does not mean you can discredit those that have. I have lived here for almost 30 years, and I have seen, heard, and experienced discrimination in this town. No place is perfect, but accepting the worst will help us build a better future. I also am upset to hear that Alderman Brown Edwards has experienced something that made her feel so uncomfortable she had to use her platform to receive an apology. Alderman G. Carper, you stated twice that anyone can come to you, and that is greatly appreciated. Unfortunately for myself, seeing that the only Alderman I have ever seen in the community is having this type of issue has made me not feel like there is trust to do so. I have felt for years standing up would do nothing because I was not privileged or fair-skinned. Finally, there are people listening and putting in work to help. Many may not agree with their methods, but at least they listen without judgment or pre-disbelief. Lastly, Mr. Stout. Please report what actually happens in these meetings. You are giving false information to the public and creating an issue there need not be. Thank you, Celeste Townsend." Althea Earl. "Greetings, City Clerk Falk. I am writing to address the matter regarding at-large Councilmember Tammy Lee Brown Edwards. There was a false allegation made against her from a fellow council member stating that she'd asked the mayor for their termination. Not only is this not true, the situation never happened. Councilmember Brown Edwards is a warm, highly accessible, genuinely friendly individual who is also committed to working hard for those who elected her. She is also one who works well collaboratively with others, whether it be her fellow council members or anyone who needs her help for the sake of getting things done there in Macomb. I know this firsthand as a fellow member of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated as her sorority sister. As a soror, she is always willing to serve wherever she is needed and does so with pleasure. She also serves as a local resource and mentor for our undergraduate sorors on the campus of WIU who greatly value her support. To make these baseless allegations with no resolution or apology is an affront to her character and extremely irregularious. This is a serious issue, especially in light of the current contentious climate as we Americans are navigating. This is even more so for her as the sole black member serving on the council. Macomb has always been, in my experience, a very racially tense atmosphere, particularly with black students, and even more so for its black population. I say this as an alumna of Western Illinois University Class of 1991 and with recent discord within the past few years, both in the community as well as the university. It pains me to say not very much has changed since then. With her being elected, she is also valuable voice and stakeholder as a member of the community raising her family in Macomb. Her role there along with her fellow council members is a vital one, and it's critical that they be on one accord to work progressively for the City of Macomb. To do so effectively and efficiently, there can be no ill will or intent or disparage the character integrity of its members professionally or otherwise, and certainly not to single out the only black member on the council. It only fosters negativity and hinders progress needed with everything occurring in the world today. It is the hope that the deserved apologies offered to Councilmember Brown Edwards to ensure moving forward on a positive and productive basis. Sincerely, Ms. Althea Earl." Randy Brown. Gail Carper. "After seeing you offer your email with the city as a way to discuss any complaint or issue, I thought I would send you my thoughts. When discussing a circumstance of a very personal nature involving abuse of power, a person needs to know their words will be taken seriously and be able to trust whoever is told the horror that occurred, that horror that is too many times never spoken of, ever, because that person wants nothing more than to do everything possible to make that horror never exist. You offer your email to complain about my horror, to dissect and judge my story, dissect and judge me as a person, dissect and judge my reputation, dissect and judge my sexual history, dissect and judge my morality, as well as dissect and judge my race. I can only make the assumption that you have never known anything like my horror. You do not want to believe my horror. I do not want to believe it. No one wants to believe my horror to be true, especially if it is about someone you know. I do not know you, I do not trust you, especially when it pertains to my horror. Could you present any personal experience to me, and I promise I would never share it? How can you think it possible for anyone to entrust you with something so personal, so intimate, so horrifying? It is my thought you will share it and my name with the world. In the hope that your offer was made in good faith and with good intentions, I hope you will understand why I could not possibly ever take you up on your offer. My suggestion is you contact a rape crisis agency and ask them to offer the safety of their legal confidentiality to compile complaints. Otherwise, your offer is empty. And to you, men, in this mail is also being sent. How would you want to share your horror if this happened to you, your daughter or your granddaughter, a person who has known the horror?" Heather McMeekin. "Dear Members of the Macomb City Council, last week's council meeting was disappointing to watch as multiple opportunities to demonstrate open, transparent, responsive leadership were missed. The current directive from IDPH is to wear masks in public, yet only Alderwoman Tammy Lee Brown Edwards appeared to be complying. It is baffling why city leaders would purposely choose to ignore public health COVID best practices during a pandemic that is killing so many. What public health professionals were in on the decision to ignore masks and what was the justification? Please consider the mixed message this sends to our community. Also, the Racial Justice Coalition has held numerous events and town halls to attempt to bring the light, bring to light the dozens of concerns we share about how the Macomb Police Department is functioning in regards to how black community members, including students, are treated by some officers and the chief. Other than Alderwoman Brown Edwards and Tom Cook, who attended one town hall back in late winter, the rest of you have never once reached out to any of the victims, their families, nor to our team members to learn more about these complaints. We welcome you to read, though, the multiple affidavits, witness statements, and complaints on our website," and she gives a website address. "How can elected officials continue to show no apparent interest in these concerns nor in the over 11.2,000 signatures demanding Chief Barker step down? How can you sit silently week after week without even demanding that our police chief answer questions from news journalists about these cases? When elected officials repeatedly refuse to show any interest, it appears to be deliberate silencing in validation and disrespect to our black community members and their family members and allies trying to help them bring their concerns to you for redress. Our entire community, including our black community members, need our public officials to ensure all are treated with fairness and respect by our own sworn officers. For that, you must take responsibility. We invite all of you to attend our Black Lives Matter pop-up event in Chandler Park on Thursday afternoon from noon to 5:00, followed by a rally and a speak-out at 5:00 PM. Come witness and interact with members of our black community, hear their concerns, and consider what they have to say. They are your constituents too and deserve your attention. Last week, our first and only black Alderwoman-at-large raised very serious allegations against one of your sitting members, yet none of you responded with concern for Tammy Lee Brown Edwards. This further demonstrates the treatment that far too many of our black community members have relayed as being the response they have received when trying to get concerns about racism addressed. When a marginalized black woman brings such concerns to a governing body, we should seek care and concern expressed by the other members of that body for the harm done, followed by a commitment to discern the facts and seek appropriate remedy to the situation. Please make an effort to demonstrate visible support for Alderwoman Brown Edwards and address her concerns as well as the rest of our black community members who are awaiting your leadership on racial justice concerns in our community. Respectfully submitted, Heather McMeekin, President of Democratic Women of McDonough County."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does anyone else wish to speak to the Council on the Public Comments section of tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number one. Update from the Downtown Development Director, Kristin Terry, on the Downtown Renovation Grant Project. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give you an update on what has been going on with the grants, for the Downtown Renovation Grants that were approved in March. So during the pandemic, of course, a lot of things have been pushed back. Just thought I would go over on 120 North Side Square. The tuck pointing has been complete, the second-floor windows have been complete, which looks amazing. Now they are open instead of closed, and they are just waiting for the awning to come in so they can install the awning, and then we will be paying them out for the completion of this grant. The 25 East Side Square, which is the Macomb Arts Center, they are replacing the first and second-floor windows. Going, they're going back to the contractor to make sure the prices haven't changed in the last four months, and then they will be moving forward onto the project for the Downtown Renovation Grant. 129 North Randolph Street, which is nostalgia, owned by Laura and John Dively. Theirs was the front and back door, and then the windows on the storefront, and then the windows on the east side of the upper floor is what they were going to replace. Due to the pandemic, they did have to stop all construction, knowing, not knowing the state of where they were going to be. I have reached out to the Divelys, and they are moving forward, hopefully in the next month. Then they will be moving forward with the renovation grant. Any questions?
Any questions for Kristin? Alderman Carper.
Are we at the end of the money for the current year?
So this is the new, this is the new fiscal year. So we approve for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Uh huh.
So we won't start the approval process again until January, right?
No, so the approval process will be March 1st, and then it will go through, we go through the applications. They have from December to March 1st to submit.
So we really won't start on future ones until December of 2020?
Exactly.
Okay.
Correct.
I know we changed it, and I get confused about what we changed it to.
Correct. And just to let everybody know, to make this public, if there is another, I have had some interest of more people applying for the Downtown Renovation Grant. We do have $7,000 left in this fiscal year, which, you know, just started. But that's $7,000 that we still have available for this fiscal year.
So we can disperse that before December of 2020?
Yep, and it's first come, first served after we approve the applications.
Good to hear. I hope we get that word out, and maybe we'll get another one in there.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? All righty, hearing none, thank you, Kristin. Appreciate the update. Item number two, discussion on a CDAP revolving loan application for Mark Lovell, Doing Business as Dad's Garage at 833 North Lafayette Street, in the amount of $25,000. There's a summary in your packet along with a copy of the application for your review. John Bannon, could you come up and go with that for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to summarize briefly, on July 9th, the Community Development Committee met and recommended for discussion this application for a revolving loan fund in the amount of $25,000 to Mark Lovell, Doing Business as Dad's Garage. The context for the loan is that there's a sinkhole on the property at 833 North Lafayette that is threatening the building. The building has recently had over $90,000 of renovation put into it in terms of new windows, new siding, and a new roof. So this infusion of capital would allow the sinkhole to be mitigated, which would directly retain six full-time equivalent jobs, two directly at Dad's Garage, and four others in tenants in the building. One major change that has occurred from the meeting on July 9th is that in communication with Ladder Neck Realty and their owner Greg Snyder and Mark Lovell, we are able to have the property as collateral, which would add property in the amount of $55,000 to that collateral for the loan. So it would be the titles and the amount of $38,000 for vehicles, and then the real property at 833 North Lafayette in the amount of $55,000. I know some of the committee members had expressed some concern on that. So all ownership is willing to use that property as collateral. As they agreed, it was in the best interest of all the property owners. So that would alleviate any collateral concern with the loan. The loan does meet all the criteria for the loan program. You know, to go over a few, it does meet the eligibility requirements of a business located within the city limits. It will be used for working capital to mitigate the sinkhole, which is permissible. It will be a three-year loan in the amount of $25,000 at the rate of 3%. It does have job retention criteria. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Lovell is also here to answer any questions that we may, that we have. But I did want to update you on the collateral difference, which I think is, makes this a much better deal for the city.
Any questions for John? Alderman Carper.
One thing that we, and it's kind of a process question, but one thing we did not go over in the committee meeting. In our rules, we have that there's a, wait, let me find it. One of the requirements is benefit to low and moderate-income persons. And clearly, from the jobs that will be retained, these are low and income, medium and moderate and low-income jobs. But our rules do say that there has to be an employee income certificate? We didn't have that unless you had it, and it wasn't in the application?
The employee income certificate was not, I mean, we could request check stubs for those as certification. The amounts do fit into the low and moderate income bracket.
I just think it's really important that if we have that specific requirement to be submitted and documented, that we get that in there, even if it's added to it a little bit later.
If, I think we can have those certifications in by next week when an action would be taken.
Yeah, it's just so important to make sure that if it's required, documentation is required in our guidelines, that we comply with all of those.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Absolutely, for next week.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Carper.
I have two questions for you, John. The first question is, I'm confused. I'm looking at the revolving loan application, and then I'm looking at the CDAP RLF request summary. Okay, so if we look at the request summary, it says, "Project Description: Requesting funding from city to purchase fund the mitigation of a sinkhole threatening the building of 833 North Lafayette." So that's the building at the bottom of the hill, correct, for CBD? Okay. And then I see that, and then I look over on the application, and it says, "Job description position Dad's Garage." So I'm just confused. Is this about, I'm just confused.
So I don't think you're confused so much. It's a confusing situation. So the ownership, Mark Lovell and Dad's Garage owns both locations, and the plan is to move the Dad's Garage operation to the 833 location. And the reason that there would be two more full-time job equivalencies added is that the financial expense is causing the current location to be staffed at less than the desired amount. So he, Mark, would hire two additional mechanic, I think additional mechanic and additional administrative personnel? Yeah, one mechanic and one support person administratively in his current operation. So it's running at a lower capacity because of the drain the other building is having. So I know that's confusing, but.
Okay, so the sinkhole, I never have gone by and looked at that. So is that sinkhole right there at your, at that property, or like the CBD store is in the salon? Are those businesses able to be open at this time because of that? I have to do it too, so you can do it.
There was a lot of revenue lost for the businesses that were there when COVID, because they were non-essential, they had to close.
Okay.
So at that time, we lost three. We lost Social Services upstairs, a salon, and a Nickety-Nack E.V. store.
Okay.
The CBD store is still trying to stay open, but with the construction, it's been a struggle as well.
Okay, and then while you're up there, I have one more question. So then I see also the amount of loan funds. It says $15,000 slash $25,000. So are anticipating it to be arranged from 15 to 25?
It's never been a direct estimate because of the size of the pipe that's needed, and the variables are so large in the project that no exact estimate has been offered, other than the numbers that you just stated.
Okay.
That was for the, the end.
Okay, all right. So the loan request is up to $25,000. Okay, thank you.
The loan request would be up to $25,000, and part of the reason the original application was handed in with the two amounts is there's a time sensitivity on the nature of the sinkhole. It has not structurally damaged the building in any way, but if the sinkhole were to expand, it could do structural damage to the building, which would obviously, you know, cause all of the jobs we're talking about never to return to that building and just change the dynamics of the project. So we wanted to get it in front of council in as timely a manner as possible.
Also, John, is that sinkhole large enough that if it were to collapse even greater with that, could it be detrimental to our infrastructure of the highway that runs right there and everything that's underneath it?
I believe our city personnel and IDOT have been thoroughly involved in the examination. Unfortunately, this is, right now, it's a private pipe that has failed. If it were continued to grow, it might threaten the roadway and IDOT's trench box. And it's, again, certainly threatening the driveway in the building that it shares a property with.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? All righty, we'll have that on for Action then on Monday evening. Thank you, John, and thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lovell for being here. Item number three, discussion on the revised estimate of maintenance costs for the motor fuel tax resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2020 street improvement projects. There's a memorandum in your packet from the Public Works Director, Ms. Ortman. Alice, I think, is attending via Zoom. Alice, can you go over your memorandum for us, please? Can you turn your YouTube channel down there, Alice, and then try it again?
Can you hear me?
Yes, very well there, thank you. We're working on it on our end here. Alice, we're still getting a little bit of feedback, I think.
Mayor Inman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Hello?
We can hear you, Alice, go ahead.
So I can't hear you guys right now because of the computer, but you can hear me, Mayor Inman, can you acknowledge me?
Yes, Alice, we can hear you, go ahead.
Yes, Alice, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, fine. So when we did the original MFT resolution, I did not realize at the time that we needed to line item out every single bid item that would be required for the project. So when we came to get permission to bid from I.D.O.T., they asked for that information. So I.M.A.G. was able to add that information to our resolution and send it out to I.M.A.G. or to I.D.O.T. to make sure that had all the information that they require, and it does. So we are asking for council to approve this revised estimate of maintenance costs, and also to give the city clerk permission to revise this estimate of maintenance cost form as the progress, as the project progresses, because as the bid prices come in and final as-of quantities come in, these numbers will change, and I.D.O.T. will require those to be updated at each step along the way. So we're asking that Melanie can be allowed to sign those forms as long as the total amount stays under the original $1.329 million that was approved in the original resolution.
Okay, any questions for Alice? Alderman Carper.
It has to, it has to stay under the original amount, because that's more than the redoing of it. I think, if I'm reading it right, it says the estimated total construction cost is less than the orig, than in the original form. So which figure are we talking about is the maximum to not go over?
I believe it's, the revised form is $1.138 million.
Okay.
And the, again, the idea is that I.D.O.T. is requiring an itemization of all these anticipated costs relative to the several different projects we have.
The maximum to not go over would be the $1,329,584.
Okay, she's now stating that it's 1.329 million.
Okay. So we just didn't give them enough paper the last time, and so they wanted more paper?
Essentially.
That's what I thought.
More detail. And then, again, the request would be for authorization to allow the city clerk to amend the form as the projects go on, and as long as it didn't exceed the amount that was originally authorized.
So we've already approved the resolution at the 1.329 million, right?
That's correct.
So do we have to do another resolution?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll do that next week?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Gil.
Anyone else? We'd like the opportunity to put this on the consent agenda if that was something we could have from you for next Monday.
Moved to put this on the consent agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded to place this item on the consent agenda for next Monday's city council meeting, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, we'll do that, thank you. Item number four, thank you, Alice. Item number four, discussion on an ordinance, Chapter 16, Section 1, 55 and 56, the Municipal Code of Macomb, Illinois pertaining to prohibited sale, distribution, use, and purchase of tobacco products by minors. This had first reading at last night, excuse me, last Monday night's council meeting, and any further discussion this evening?
Have there been any changes since last week?
No.
All righty.
Well, I guess, and I guess I will add, I haven't had any further communication from anyone either with the changes that were previously made.
Any further discussion than tonight? If not, we'll place that on for second reading and final action then on next Monday's agenda. Item number five, an update on the Complete Count Census. Mr. Bannon.
Thank you, Mayor. For our update on the Complete Count Census Committee, just like to reference that we're continuing to partner with different organizations. We've been, we've been putting out materials at the library sales, at the library annex, through the Friends of the Library, we've got some things through the farmer's market, several of them have agreed to put out census items, and we had a great event Saturday, thanks to the NAACP, Byron Shabazz, in cooperation with the Complete Count Census Committee, thanks to Mount Calvary for hosting us, and Alan Henderson. You know, we, it was really a good event to just connect with people in the community. Alderman Brown Edwards was there, so we got some people signed up for the census, we got people registered to vote and registered for absentee ballots. I think we had a lot of nice interaction and raised the profile for the census. And again, just want to thank all of our community partners for that event and for continuing to get the word out moving forward.
Any questions for John?
Do you have more events planned? I know it's hard to do with the COVID restrictions.
We have a few more planned. I think, first, we want to do one in the southwest quadrant, and the northeast and the southwest were the two that were, had a little lower numbers, and then we want to do an event around the time of W.I.U. students coming back in the northwest quadrant. You know, speaking to different, we have a lot of materials through a couple, through a grant that we were fortunate enough to get from the Oklahoma Department of Human Services, and so I think we have some materials that we can give away. We're also working to do some activities, kind of just getting the word out, maybe with Rocky, the Rocky Bulldogs around town. So all, awesome, all ideas, and we're all going to move forward with a lot of those. But I think, you know, we're going to have a presence at the next four library book sales that they do at the annex. So I think partnering is important because it helps us extend our reach beyond that, what we can do just ourselves.
So at the events, are you actually filling out census forms?
We did have computers, and we did, we did literally sign a few people up Saturday. So we have the Wi-Fi, we have the computers. We've been talking about perhaps some of the events in Chandler Park with Black Lives Matter going there as well. So we'll see, I mean, we want to get, we want to get out to as many different events as we can. We're set up to do so now, and hopefully, hopefully it's safe, safe to do so.
That's the hard part. Thanks, John.
No, thank you.
Anyone, Alderman, man?
We used to have a cup picnic, welcome back. I don't think we did it last year, I don't think there's any plans for this year either.
The downtown, I think we called it Neck Up last year, it was a little different program.
And I don't know what the cost would be, that's why we'd bring it up tonight, so you'd have time to look into it. But that would be an event that would bring college-age students out and the opportunity to register them, not only to vote, but to sign them up on the census and stuff. It might be worth looking into.
I love the idea, and we'll talk to some other people. I'm a little concerned about the health implications with COVID and getting too many people in one spot.
Is it any different than what you just held this last Saturday?
Well, we had sufficient space for two groups of 50 people because they were separated by 30 feet.
Well, I think the long Sherman Hall, you could pretty well.
Yeah. I just worry that with students, you might actually get 1,000 people, and I don't know if we would have the space.
Well, we've never got quite that many.
Maybe, I do like the idea.
Just for discussion.
No, understand, appreciate the idea, Dennis, and as John said, the event this past weekend at Mount Calvary Church of God in Christ, and again, thank you, Pastor Henderson, for your cooperation with that. Staff very plainly interacted with the volunteers there and set up with a maximum area that can accommodate 50 people, and then under the CDC guidelines, they could be another group of 50, but spread 30 feet apart. There were three lots, I think, altogether, three city building lots that were for free, and that allowed for that space to accommodate what we hoped would have been about 150 people or so. So, but that was with three building lots, so it's something we could sure entertain. Kristen, have you had any, any plans to do that yet? Still waiting?
We are now calling it the downtown block party. Talk to other.
We can't do everything downtown.
Yeah.
We need to go out where they live.
Unfortunately, I don't think it will be happening this year.
It's up to you guys.
Okay. All right. All righty. Anything else, John? Any questions for John? The event did have a corporate sponsor as well, is that right?
Thank you, Mayor. We really very much appreciative. Starbucks sponsored the event, they had cookies, they had coffee, and they had people there the whole time, so really appreciated, appreciative that, A, they supported the event with their presence, and B, they came through with food and drink and helped make it possible. So thank you to Starbucks.
And thank you to Pastor Henderson for giving me grilling lessons. All righty, thank you. Any other business this evening? I would like to take just a minute and remind the city, the council members, we received a couple of requests here in the last week or so. There's been a grassroots effort taken up by Jackie Foxall, you may know Jackie, she's a longstanding member of the community, and you may have seen some signs around town, two of which are placed here at City Hall, reminding folks that wearing masks can save lives. So that's a grassroots effort that Jack has taken up to make those signs and then display them in public locations and on private property from folks who are willing to support that effort across the community. And we also had outreach from Western Illinois University, Dr. Josh Averbeck, he's a professor in the Communications Department at Western and a social media lab. He and a student from Davenport, Iowa, Senior Communications Mayor Josh Brennan have developed the hashtag, actually three, hashtag mask up W.I.U., hashtag mask up Macomb, and then they also have done that at the Quad Cities Campus, but in the email to me, Mr. Averbeck indicates that part of their inspiration was Ms. Foxall's grassroots campaign. So immediately following the meeting, we would ask the members of the city council to join us down in front of City, the main entrance to City Hall, next to Rocky, and next to our sign that says masks save lives for a group photograph, so we can hashtag mask up Macomb. Any, anything else to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Excuse me, are we still under the?
Everybody's present.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carrying, meaning adjourn, see you all downstairs.